Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your patience. We took a short recess to make sure we had the proper handouts in front of us. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for March 4, 2008. Our purpose is to discuss the capital improvement program. Roll call please.
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Quintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Giuseppe.
Here.
Aaron Ingerian.
Here. I believe Mr. Quintaro is in the back, so let the record reflect his presence as soon as he walks in.
Will do.
And Mr. Starbird.
Here. Enter the chamber.
Do you like the report?
Yes, we should. Let's hear the report.
The agenda for the March 4, 2008 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 28, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item today is Acting Director of Finance regarding discussion of the capital improvement program and some motion approving supplemental CIP program before you today.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. And thank you for your indulgence as we work to make sure you had accurate numbers. We had some internal inconsistencies that we noted at the last minute, so Mr. Allers has quickly been fixing those and running off new handouts for you. They are being printed as we speak, so let me suggest we can proceed with the presentation, then as soon as those are done, we'll bring them into you and members of the audience. To start with, some prefatory comments, then I'll turn to Mr. Allers to begin to take you through the numbers in the capital improvement program fund for this year. It's actually a 10-year CIP, but you revisit it somewhat every year. And because of issues that have arisen since the last time you had a study session, I think that was back in October, we are actually having to look a little bit beyond the confines of the normal capital improvement program because some pressures have resulted that impact the CIP, the general fund, and some other funds. So we're trying to tie all of this in together, so you get a complete picture of the CIP and some of those issues that have created pressure on CIP funds as well as general fund and a couple of the other funds that are contributing to them. With that, I would venture to guess the city council has probably spent more time and is more knowledgeable about this year's CIP and the 10-year plan as any former Glendale City Council has been. At the beginning of the process, you said you wanted to reevaluate a number of major components of the CIP program for the upcoming year. This was back in the April-May timeframe as we were putting the final pieces of the capital improvement program for fiscal year '07-'08 and the successive nine years together. With that, you approved prior to July 1 what I call the preliminary capital improvement program. That was with a lot of the base capital improvement projects in it. And then with that, it created a great deal of capacity in the capital improvement program by means of resources and also a long list of needs. You then spent the following, I think, four or five study sessions going through that long list of needs and parsing out priorities for them. In October, you gave us a direction on issues such as parks, including Rockhaven, some need for improved fire stations, libraries particularly in Montrose, road improvements, ADA improvements, library improvements, and some increases in resources committed to what I call our operating systems like our wireless system and computer systems. Along the way, you enacted park and library fees. You committed 75 percent of the tax increment from housing development in the CBD and San Fernando project area to parks and libraries, and you committed an additional 25 percent of commercial tax increment otherwise not committed to parks and libraries. I want to note these last two items are not, I don't think they are as yet reflected in the CIP, Ron.
It is.
Okay. So we'll touch on that in the capital improvement program. Apparently we have the 75 percent for parks and libraries included in this and the 25 percent not as yet. With that, I would venture to say that it is a historic commitment in Glendale's history, historic in the sense that I don't know when you would find the level of resources committed in a 10-year capital improvement program to parks, libraries, and those types of facilities in particular. But at the same time, you've made a significant commitment to maintaining critical infrastructure in streets, sidewalks, and improving facilities for the disabled. We bring to you today a capital improvement program that is balanced. It draws on a number of resources and other funds in order to address some of the pressing needs that have arisen in the last six months, such as the need to address slope failure resulting from the storms in January of 2005, some liability issues that have arisen a result of those storms that we're having to step up to the plate for. Those have presented considerable challenge for us. The need to maintain our streets, and your direction was to find a way to commit more resources to streets than we did in the preliminary budget, and as I noted, a very considerable commitment, not even including the tax increment funds that you committed to parks and libraries, but basic capital improvement program resources for the upgrading of existing parks and development of new parks as well as commitment to our existing library system. With that, let me turn to Ron Allers who will begin to take us through the numbers. Apparently--
Mr. Starbird.
Yes.
I hate to interrupt, but I did receive a special request from a speaker who has an appointment. Mr. Paulson, this, the presentation by the finance director is probably going to take at least on the order of a half hour to some. So if you have, if you can't wait, I'll invite you now to speak.
I can wait.
Oh, he won't be done in 15 minutes.
So hopefully your, the presumptions that you have are correct on what the financial situation is on the CIP budget. But I do want to give you a chance to speak, and I know you came down and you've been waiting, and we delayed the meeting. So--
Thank you very much.
Let's go through it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members and city manager Starbird and staff members. My name is Ross Paulson, and I'm a Glendale resident. I am also the Assistant Regional Commissioner for AYSO, which is Region 88 of the American Youth Soccer Organization. AYSO has been here in our community for about 33 years now, and I am here today to speak in favor of soccer fields for the city. In the capital improvement budget, you do have some items listed here, and I appreciate that. I see that you have monies listed for the Columbus soccer field, which is great, and for the freeway park site A. I would say that we do have a tremendous need right now. I'm going to speak about that very briefly. Right now, we have about 3,500 kids in the program. Our program has been growing quite significantly over the course of the last several years. In approximately the last 10 years, we've had a doubling of the number of kids in the program. Just in the last two years, we've had, we've gone from 2,900 kids in 2005 to 3,200 kids in 2006 to now 3,500 kids in this last year. We've been growing at the rate of 10 percent in the last three years and at a considerable rate in the last 10 years. We have, we service kids in terms of soccer from, who are aged 4 to 19. We also have a VIP program which deals with soccer for disabled kids. We have about 40 kids in that program. The organization is all volunteer. We have about 1,000 volunteers who come out, stripe fields, set up goals, coach kids, referee games, and administer the program. Everybody's a volunteer. The cost for this program is $80, and the cost is very cheap and reasonable. Right now, the fields are very crowded. We do need more space. We had about 350 kids last year who couldn't play due to lack of space and field space. According to a, an existing general plan report, apparently the city was, is, should have this size, some 38 or 40 fields. It's not entirely clear to me. But I do know this, that we are continuing to grow, and we will have a continued need for soccer fields. I would urge the city council to support these capital expenditures for these soccer fields and, if possible, to get these matters moving as quickly as possible. If you build it, the kids will play. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question. And the age range is from literally, what, four or five all the way up to teens?
We have kids, yes. The, the kids who are in the middle school and in high school have a significant need for real soccer fields because they can't play on, on a smaller area. And, you know, this, this is a good program. It keeps them busy. We use a lot of these older kids to help with dealing with the VIP kids, for example. We have them come out and coach the disabled kids on Saturdays. And we also have them involved with the referee programs that we have, so they become youth referees. So, yes, we have quite a wide range. We try to get them early before they hit the schools even. And that's, we have a U5 program, which is a little bit--
And that's what I thought. So, yeah, four or five are already there kicking, right?
Yes. Yes, they play, when they're four years old, they're playing three against three.
And with the larger full-size field, that means you could actually involve even more middle school and high school teams?
Absolutely. It's, it's in that grouping that we're really having a crunch time. We were playing from, we played from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night on the, on Saturdays, for example. There's just no more space.
Normal capital improvement program. Because some pressures have resulted that impact the CIP, the general fund and some other funds. So we're trying to tie all of this in together. So you get a complete picture of the CIP and some of those issues that have created pressure on CIP funds as well as general fund and a couple of the other funds that are contributing to them. With that, I would venture to guess the city council has probably spent more time and is more knowledgeable about this year's CIP and the 10-year plan as any former Glendale City Council has been. At the beginning of the process, you said you wanted to reevaluate a number of major components of the CIP program for the upcoming year. This was back in the April-May timeframe as we were putting the final pieces of the capital improvement program for fiscal year '07-'08 and the successive nine years together. With that, you approved prior to July 1 what I call the preliminary capital improvement program. That was with a lot of the base capital improvement projects in it. And then with that, it created a great deal of capacity in the capital improvement program by means of resources and also a long list of needs. You then spent the following, I think, four or five study sessions going through that long list of needs and parsing out priorities for them. In October, you gave us a direction on issues such as parks, including Rockhaven, some need for improved fire stations, libraries particularly in Montrose, road improvements, ADA improvements, library improvements, and some increases in resources committed to what I call our operating systems like our wireless system and computer systems. Along the way, you enacted park and library fees. You committed 75% of the tax increment from housing development in the CBD and San Fernando project area to parks and libraries, and you committed an additional 25% of commercial tax increment otherwise not committed to parks and libraries. I want to note these last two items are not, I don't think they are as yet reflected in the CIP run. Okay, so we'll touch on that in the capital improvement program. Apparently we have the 75% for parks and libraries included in this and the 25% not as yet. With that, I would venture to say that it is a historic commitment in Glendale's history, historic in the sense of I don't know when you would find the level of resources committed in a 10-year capital improvement program to parks, libraries, and those types of facilities in particular. But at the same time, you've made a significant commitment to maintaining critical infrastructure in streets, sidewalks, and improving facilities for the disabled. We bring to you today a capital improvement program that is balanced. It draws on a number of resources and other funds in order to address some of the pressing needs that have arisen in the last six months, such as the need to address slope values resulting from the storms in January of 2005, some liability issues that have arisen a result of those storms that we're having to step up to the plate for. Those have presented considerable challenge for us. The need to maintain our streets and your direction was to find a way to commit more resources to streets than we did in the preliminary budget. And as I noted, a very considerable commitment, not even including the tax increment funds that you committed to parks and libraries, but basic capital improvement program resources for the upgrading of existing parks and development of new parks as well as commitment to our existing library system. With that, let me turn to Ron Allers who will begin to take us through the numbers. Apparently--
Mr. Starburg--
Yes?
I hate to interrupt, but I did receive a special request from a speaker who has an appointment. Mr. Paulson? This, the presentation by the finance director is probably going to take at least on the order of a half hour to some. So if you have, if you can't wait, I'll invite you now to speak.
I can wait.
Oh, he won't be done in 15 minutes.
So hopefully your, the presumptions that you have are correct on what the financial situation is on the CIP budget. But I do want to give you a chance to speak and I know you came down and you've been waiting and we delayed the meeting. So--
Thank you very much.
Let's go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members and City Manager Starburg and staff members. My name is Ross Paulson and I'm a Glendale resident. I am also the Assistant Regional Commissioner for AYSO, which is Region 88 of the American Youth Soccer Organization. AYSO has been here in our community for about 33 years now, and I am here today to speak in favor of soccer fields for the city. In the capital improvement budget, you do have some items listed here and I appreciate that. I see that you have monies listed for the Columbus Soccer Field, which is great, and for the freeway park site A. I would say that we do have a tremendous need right now. I'm going to speak about that very briefly. Right now, we have about 3,500 kids in the program. Our program has been growing quite significantly over the course of the last several years. In approximately the last 10 years, we've had a doubling of the number of kids in the program. Just in the last two years, we've had, we've gone from 2,900 kids in 2005 to 3,200 kids in 2006 to now 3,500 kids in this last year. We've been growing at the rate of 10% in the last three years and at a considerable rate in the last 10 years. We have, we service kids in terms of soccer from, who are aged four to 19. We also have a VIP program which deals with soccer for disabled kids. We have about 40 kids in that program. The organization is all volunteer. We have about 1,000 volunteers who come out, stripe fields, set up goals, coach kids, referee games, and administer the program. Everybody's a volunteer. The cost for this program is $80 and the cost is very cheap and reasonable. Right now, the fields are very crowded. We do need more space. We had about 350 kids last year who couldn't play due to lack of space and field space. According to a, an existing general plan report, apparently the city was, is, should have of this size some 38 or 40 fields. It's not entirely clear to me. But I do know this, that we are continuing to grow and we will have a continued need for soccer fields. I would urge the city council to support these capital expenditures for these soccer fields and if possible, to get these matters moving as quickly as possible. If you build it, the kids will play. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question. And the age range is from literally, what, four or five all the way up to teens?
We have kids, yes. The, the kids who are in the middle school and in high school have a significant need for real soccer fields because they can't play on, on a smaller area. And, you know, this, this is a good program. It keeps them busy. We use a lot of these older kids to help with dealing with the VIP kids, for example. We have them come out and coach the disabled kids on Saturdays. And we also have them involved with the referee programs that we have, so they become youth referees. So yes, we have quite a wide range. We try to get them early before they hit the schools even. And that's, we have a U5 program, which is a little bit--
And that's what I thought. So yeah, four or five are already there kicking, right?
Yes. Yes, they play, when they're four years old, they're playing three against three.
And with the larger full-size fields, that means you could actually involve even more middle school and high school teams?
Absolutely. It's, it's in that grouping that we're really having a crunch time. We, we were playing from, we play from eight in the morning until eight at night on the, on Saturdays, for example. There's just no more space. And that's why we've hit the wall. Thank you for your question.
Mr. Weaver.
You have read, you see where the money's in the budget.
Yes, I did see that. And--
Even that, not before 2009 or '10 with Columbus. If everything fell in place, what would occur?
That is certainly a very big help. Yes, I think that's a great thing. And, and I'm here to urge that even the other monies be moved up if possible. I know that you have many issues and I am just here to simply tell you that we have a tremendous need in the community for it.
There's, it needs a lot of categories, just so you're aware. Right now, we only begin to look at park site A until 2010. I don't know about my colleagues, I must have got 50, 60, 70 emails from soccer parents asking for fields now, today. And there's constraints with everything we do, so.
Well, I, I do think, you know, any journey, you know, the Chinese have an old saying, the journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step. We need to make that first step. And I think that is, that I guess, as I would appreciate the, the budgeting, that there's an intent to get in the EIR moving. I think that the process should be moved in an expeditious fashion.
So you'd like to see planning studies starting now rather than out, future years out?
I would think so, yes.
So we would have to cut something else in the budget to do that?
Well, I'm not, not the, I'm not an expert on building. I'm not an expert on all of the things that you have considered. I do think that, you know, you have a great deal of help from the city manager and his staff with regard to what works and what doesn't work. But I, I think, I'm just telling you that there is a tremendous need for it. And if it could be done, then I would ask that you try to do it. You do the best that you can do. That's what we ask of you, too. Thank you.
I just one last question. Mr. Starburg, isn't that something that when we do the budget, starting at, what, next month? Or do we, we will be having budgetary study sessions, if you're correct?
You'll be having discussions of the operational budget starting this month. But this capital improvement program is a 10-year program.
Right.
So frankly, I don't anticipate coming back and spending a lot of time on capital improvement program if you approve this plan because it'll just be hot off the press. A quick comment about the timing of the soccer projects, and I think we discussed this the last study session that we had. Columbus is scheduled, and we plan on doing the planning prior to the site actually being made available to us. You recall, the district needs to construct a new Columbus school. They anticipated two years for that. So we plugged in the Columbus soccer field to actually begin construction as soon as the site's made available to us. The district's obligated to give us a rough graded site, clear of all the school facilities that are currently on it and all the underground utilities. We then take it and takes us about a year to 18 months to do the complete construction. That is as fast as that project can happen. Even if we had money earlier, we couldn't do it because there's a school on the site currently. Our feeling was that, that is a site that can probably happen the quickest of any of the sites that we have. I guess there's some potential we could move up the planning and environmental review component of the freeway site A. But I do get a little bit concerned about how many things we're trying to manage at one time. We'll have Columbus School. You have a lot of other park projects that are here that the park staff and planning staff are having to also manage, but--
That'd be my point. If you were even to consider it, I'd like to know what's going to slip in order to work on that. Because you can't do everything at one time.
Yeah. You, you had that conversation back when we talked about freeway sports site A and we had noted, that's why we had that plugged in, in that 10-11 timeframe. It gets us free of Columbus. Frankly, Columbus should be done at that time. We have a number of other major projects that we're having to manage and design and go through environmental review on. And I suspect, again, if we can move the earlier planning dates up, we'll look at being able to do that. I suspect that the, the environmental review, the interchange with the neighborhood is going to take considerable time for that freeway site A. And those of you who are here for the original freeway sports project will know that there's going to be a lot of interchange with the neighborhood as we go through the environmental review process for that one. Mr. Quintero.
Well, for myself, I see it differently. We already own the freeway park site, and so that to me should be the quicker response. We're waiting for the school district. At one point, I understand the school district actually considered holding back on, on Columbus. Now they're--
They didn't. They, they had, they had a, they had a funding shortfall because of a design problem that occurred. They, I don't know where they've, where the money's come from, but they committed the money. So they're still on track.
Yeah. But at any rate, something else may come up in terms of, of a holdup to that project where the other alternative, number one, there would be the possibility of two full-size fields. And, I mean, it's all within our hands, so later on, when we start talking about decisions, I'm going to push for a quicker, a quicker response on those two, on those two potential fields because it's, it's ready to go. I mean, the infrastructure's there. We just have to build it out and so forth, so.
Mr. Vizefian.
I agree with Mr. Quintero. I think the freeway site A is more like a master of our own destiny to an extent. I don't know what's going to happen with the school. I know that there's major budget cuts in Sacramento, and I don't know what the school's going to do in order to meet some of those shortfalls. Nevertheless, I do agree with the speaker. Sitting in the audience, when we were trying to build the sports complex, I will tell you, it took almost a decade. Is that what it took, Dave? Do you remember? It was 10 years or 12 years?
Yeah, it was way back.
Yeah, it took 10 or 12 years to build that thing. So it's, it doesn't happen overnight. And I, I think if we're going to do those fields, it would not take a lot for us to move forward with the environmental, because we really don't do the environmental. We hire a consultant and, and the cost of that thing may be $100, $150,000. So it's not an exorbitant amount, but it's something that gets the clock running. And so the AYSO and everybody else knows that we're serious about this. We're going to move forward, gives plenty of time for the public to know about it. And so when we actually have the funding to do this, we have done all the paperwork. So we don't sit there and wait for another two years going through the, all the paperwork. So we're ready to go with that. So I, I think that's something that we should start plugging in on this thing.
Mr. Mayor, only, why are they concerned? We have to do advanced planning. I have never seen any preliminary layouts or anything for that site before. Before you can do an environmental document, you better have proposed a plan and alternatives to whatever that is. I, I know nothing and I don't know the, how many acres there are there. Can you put two soccer fields and some tennis courts or, what are the constraints on the site? I have no idea. I, I can't see how we can go into an environmental document until somebody, whether it's staff or consultant, looks at potential for development of the site. And to do that, that means moving dollars further up and taking something else out. And I, I don't know where we're going with any of that.
Mr. Draven, let me just ask, is that the case? Well, let me suggest, that all has to do with timing. The, the big nut on the freeway site is the actual construction. Taking the advanced money and moving it up sooner so we can do the engineering, design, and then do environmental, because we'll need to have a good sense of what the project's all about and what obstacles we're likely to face as we begin to do construction up there. There may need to be a lot of dirt hauled out. You'll need to have a sense of that in order to do an effective environmental on it. But that's, you know, that can probably be done much sooner in the process. We have it pegged in here, $500,000, about 10% of the project.
2010.
2010. We can certainly look at how much, how much of that we can move up, remembering we're almost in 2008. So we can certainly look at how much quicker we can do the engineering, advanced planning, and get sequels started on it. We may be able to advance that a year, get that started in 2008, the upcoming fiscal year. Yeah, that's not going to put a big crimp in our cash flow on the CIP either. Certainly construction, if we want to move up to $5 million, then we got to start moving big pieces around in the CIP.
But you don't have to spend the whole $500,000 at one time?
No, no, not--
You could do 250 for 2008 and then the other part because it takes time to get--
Yeah.
EIR takes at least a year--
The pre-work is much, doing the pre-work earlier is much easier than moving up the construction, certainly. Mr. Draven.
That being the case, then I would join my, add my voice to what appears to be a growing chorus of, of those who would like to at least get the process moving to the extent that we can. So.
So would you be a baritone or--
I, I would like to add, Mr. Paulson, if you, if you do anything, please go back to Aldo and the rest of the participants and directors in AYSO that, with a clear message that this council is fully committed towards providing soccer fields and athletic facilities for our youth, especially to groups like the AYSO. And I think one of the best indications of that was several months back, in September, October, when we did pass the park impact fee, park impact development fee with the help of the AYSO. And your voices were heard then. Your voices are certainly being heard now. I have two children of my own that participate in AYSO and I know exactly, I've been at the eight o'clock in the morning games and the eight o'clock in the evening games and the practices where you share it with three other field, three other teams on a baseball diamond. So we, we fully support the programs and your efforts to keep our youth healthy, active. And there are some details, as you're sort of gathering, that we need to work out, but there should be no question as to our commitment, entire council's commitment towards providing for our youth. So thank you for coming and thank you to the AYSO. Thank you very much. I, I think that, you know, everybody in the program understands that the city is committed to the kids in this community. And we, we do appreciate all of your efforts on that regard. I mean, it means a big, it's a big deal for the kids. It's a big deal for their parents. And, I mean, when your kid scores a goal, say, you remember that. When your kid hits a homerun, you remember that. These are big lifetime events for these youngsters and their families. And I think that it's great that we have a city that does want to step up to the plate and do the right thing on these things. If we can get these things moving, so much the better for all of the kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Allers, I'm sorry. We terminated you before you even began, so we're, we're ready for your report.
Okay. This afternoon, we're going to be talking about capital improvement program for the 10-year plan, which includes this current fiscal year, 2007 and '08. And to quickly go over what has already transpired, back in June of 2007, the city council did adopt a CIP budget and a, and a 10-year plan. And I thought we would just go over a quick refresher on what actually got adopted. So on slide three, we have here a number of the, of the projects that were adopted in this, in this 10-year plan, and we kind of called it a preliminary capital improvement program. So you can see here, Neighborhood Business Improvement District of roughly $50,000 a year, ADA facility modifications of $400,000 a year for all the 10 years. And then our street program, which is broken up into street resurfacing, our gutter construction and our street reconstruction for a total of a million and a half a year for 10 years. And then corrugated metal pipe replacement as well of our annual program in Public Works of 125. So this is our first half of the 10-year. And then here's the second half of the 10-year here on slide four.
Ron, I'm sorry. Before we get too far past this, the street reconstruction, keep in mind that then street resurfacing, this is all on top of the gas tax that you commit every year to streets. Correct, Ron?
Correct.
Which is about $4.5 million in addition to this.
Correct. We'll cover that in a few slides as well. But yeah, this is an, on top of our gas tax money, this is all of our money that we received that have no strings attached and we can use it for whatever purpose the city council decides. So here's the second half of the, of the 10-year plan for these programs, and you can see that the numbers have remained the same. So for total, on the far right-hand column is the 10-year total for each one of these programs. So Neighborhood Business Improvement District, $500,000. ADA, $4,150,000. And then $5 million, $5 million, and $5 million for a total of $15 million in our street program, and then a million and a quarter for corrugated metal pipe. Again, this is our basic CIP that we adopted in June. That's already in place. Next set of programs, Public Works Garage CND, CNG Compressed Natural Gas Updates of $500,000. Shoal Canyon Landfill Reserve of $1,005,000 is what we had originally adopted back in June. And this is just setting aside money for the future post-closure maintenance of Shoal Canyon. So this is a GASP requirement, Government Accounting Standards Board, as well as meeting the California Integrated Waste Management Board requirement to set aside money for that eventual closure of the landfill and maintain it for 30 years. Next group is our parks projects. So Ball Field Light Replacement, Adult Rec Center, Park Upgrades and Maintenance, Central Park Renovation. You can see some are annual programs, some are specific programs like Ball Field Light Replacement of $840,000. And then we go to the next, second half of the 10-year program. So you can see like Shoal Canyon Landfill Reserve has over the 10 years, $15 million set aside to take care of the landfill after it closes. Park Upgrades and Maintenance is just an annual program for the Parks Department of setting aside $8 million to do those projects in the different parks in the city of Glendale. Next group, we finish off with parks. So Maryland Mini Park of $1 million, Cedar Mini Park Development, $1,150,000. Stengel Field, $200,000. Montrose Shopping Park Landscape, $130,000. These are all this year and they're all funded currently in this current fiscal year. Grand Library renovation, additional $900,000 on top of what it was already, what is already in there in that project that was funded in previous years, as well as an annual program on renovating existing libraries where we're setting aside $450,000 a year annually. And then the second part of the 10-year, and you can see the numbers. So for example, $4.5 million on renovate existing libraries over the 10 years. I'm going quickly since this is what is already adopted by the council. Our general government projects rely on technology mainly. Radio site power system, $150,000. CSI, fire data, $125,000. City Services Interface, an additional 60. And then GD, GTV6, two projects there for the total of 170 and an additional 80. And I don't think there's anything in the second half of the, of the 10-year plan. So you can see the total CIP fund had allocated over 10 years, the $54,489,000 that is in the lower right-hand corner on, on this chart. And again, that was our preliminary budget, leaving a lot of resources available for the process that we went through from July through December to hone in on the priorities of the, of the city council. As Mr. Starburg previously related, here is our gas tax fund, and this is where we have anywhere from $4 million to $5 million plus annually paving the way for our street programs. So street resurfacing, gutter construction, and street reconstruction. And you can see the annual allocations there for a total over the 10 years of $50,855,000. Again, this was what was adopted. Since then, we've had some additional requirements placed on the general fund, if you will, the CIP fund and our liability funds. So we'll quickly go over these numbers where we came out--
Ron, I'm sorry. Before you do that--
Sure.
Quick comment on the streets. If you take the total of the gas tax money and the total of the three projects for street resurfacing, gutter reconstruction, street reconstruction of $15 million over 10 years, then you've got roughly $40 million. Is that right? $40 million?
No.
I'm sorry, I said in the five-year. $65 million.
Over 10 years.
$65 million over 10 years for street reconstruction.
Some additional requirements and solutions to, to these requirements are on the next two page, two pages where, again, we're kind of looking at the bigger picture between the general fund, the liability funds of the city, as well as the capital improvement program of the city, and different issues that have, that have come to light. So here's all the additional requirements that we have on these unrestricted resources. So for example, liability cases of $11.5 million that we need to figure out how to fund. MSB retrofit needs an additional, for that project, an additional $1.1 million. Open space purchases is another exam, another project that we need to fund to the tune of roughly $4.5 million to purchase open space in the city.
Again, this label should actually be parks slash open space purchases. We think of open spaces, hillside open space. This is really more of parks, open space, flatland-- This is really more of parks, open space, flatland purchases.
Old police building, additional funding coming of $500,000 on top of what was already set aside. Sales tax revenue reduction, as the council is well aware, as different headlines have been going throughout the state of California and different cities, we are feeling the effect of the economic slowdown, and our sales tax revenues come in on a quarterly basis, and we analyze that. And we actually have a company that tracks all that data for us and tells us how well the auto dealerships are doing and what the slowdown is or the increase in different areas of the city or the Galleria and so forth. Since part of the revenue makeup of the capital improvement program is from sales tax, as each quarter transgresses, the economic slowdown continues, so we are reducing our sales tax revenue estimate by $200,000 for this program.
Mr. Safian.
Sure. Does this include what's going to happen with Americana? I mean, Americana coming online in, you know, May, or it's not included?
Americana is included, but this $200,000 is just for this current fiscal year, and I'm counting in Americana starting for next year and ongoing.
Okay. So but between May and June, you don't think that $200,000 will be offset by Americana?
No. Because I think that the slowdown will continue in the other areas of the city, be it car dealerships or wherever the retail is in the city. We haven't seen a bottom yet and an uptick.
Ron, how current are these projections and these figures?
They are current as we have not received Christmas quarter yet. So they are current as of September 30th, '07, when we will get Christmas quarter and we'll get the analysis in about a month.
Okay. How about liability? How current is that figure?
They're very current.
Very current.
They are very current.
MSB retrofit is?
Very current.
Current.
Everything else is very current.
Open space purchase?
Very current.
It is very current?
It's very current, in the sense of it's probably conservative. We expect we'll probably have some savings there. The same on the liability cases. As I noted in an early report to you, it's very likely that between liability cases and open space park purchases, we could see a savings of $1.5 million in those two. So these are very conservative numbers right now.
Okay. Thanks.
The next two items on the list was decided at a prior meeting. We still have to come back to council to actually get these two items appropriated, Fire Station 26 in Casa Verdugo. And then new requirement of slope repairs of $2.5 million for total requirements of The way we met these requirements was through a host of reductions in projects and a large use of reserves, be it in the general fund or in the case of our liability fund, to come up with the $20,715,000. So for the general fund, the general fund is contributing almost $7 million, $6,965,000 to meet these requirements. What this does, it will take our reserve down to 31%, which is where we were a little over a year ago in our general fund. The liability fund also has reserves set aside, so the liability fund is going to contribute $4.5 million to this cause. CIP to-be program for this current year, '07 and '08.
Ron, if I can, let's stop there for a second. Contributions from the liability reserve under normal circumstances, the entire number there that was listed as potential liability settlements would all come out of the liability fund reserve. In effect, by doing this, you're bolstering the liability fund reserve when everything is said and done. So in effect, because we're not tapping the liability fund reserve for the entire amount of the liability exposure, then in effect, the fund is going to be in a better condition when everything is said and done here.
Well, what was the fund before?
Don't recall.
The liability fund has cash of $9 million, but it is underfunded by approximately $3 million. We had an actuarial completed in February 2007. So at that point, we matched up the payables to the actuarial study that was done by Armtech, and we're down about $3 million.
So you could have, on a cash basis, funded most of these liabilities, but frankly, it would have taken your fund to a position we couldn't recommend that you leave it. So in this case, we went looking for ways to address this issue without entirely tapping the liability fund for all the resources.
Correct.
In effect, we use it for about a little less than half of the exposure. It's a way essentially saying we were.
So you're not in a negative of $3 million. You're actually in a positive of 1.5.
Well, see, it's an actuarial assessment. From a cash position, you'll be in a better position than you would have been because you would have drained the entire cash. This leaves you with $4.5 million cash reserve. But the actuarials look at all of the reserves, the conservative estimates of what they expect someday claims incurred and claims not incurred might actually expose you to. It's an actuarial assessment. It's not based on, frankly, current reality or what you have in hand. So it's more like an assessment on a retirement fund, for example. In this case, if you look at what we would likely be expected to incur in the future, we needed to find a way to put $3,000 more into that fund is a way of looking at it. This helps get us there.
I mean, $3 million.
$3 million more. Yeah, this helps get us there.
The third item on the list, which is CIP to-be program for this current year, $400,000. We're using this money that was set aside as a contingency, if you will, for unexpected projects or increases in current projects. We're using this year's $400,000 to meet the requirements of the $20 million.
Now, Ron, that'll leave $400,000 in each of the remaining nine years?
Correct.
So over the 10-year plan, you have $3.6 million that is unprogrammed. Okay?
And then we have our reduction in a number of programs, as you see here on the list. Reduce ADA upgrades for '08, '09 by $250,000. And we'll go into this in future slides to what actually is remaining in all of these projects. There's still money remaining in all of these projects. Reduce street reconstruction in '08, '09 by a million and a half. Shoal Canyon Reserve for the current year and the next year actually brings it down to zero. Reduce park upgrades and maintenance by $250,000 each in the next two years, or the current year and the following year. Reduce Maryland Mini Park Development of $1 million. Reduce new park development of $2.5 million. And a lot of these reductions are the actual additions that the council approved of between July and December during our numerous study sessions that we had with council. It's not actually reducing what you have currently provided and adopted as of June '07, except for the Maryland Mini Park. Reduce the old police building by $500,000. And then the sewer fund contribution to MSB retrofit of $1,001,000. There are a number of employees that are in the MSB, and the operations are housed in the MSB building. So this is a nexus between the sewer fund and the operations that are housed there and what it provides to the city and its equity contribution into fixing the building. And then other revenue of $500,000 to meet our requirements of $20,715,000.
I have a question. All of these are monies that we have taken from other programs, mostly capital improvement programs. And the first one, actually, it's a general fund reserve. Isn't there any opportunity to reduce our general fund operation and create cost savings and transfer that instead of eliminate all of this?
Well.
I mean, let's say, in many places, they freeze salaries, they freeze hiring people. I mean, the city has done it in the past, and so they basically shrink the workforce through attrition and so on and so forth. So it generates savings, cost savings, to the general fund, and then you transfer that to offset some of this stuff. Because in reality, all of these, especially the projects, are projects that you have to do. So if you're taking them out this year, you're going to have to replace them at some point.
Ron, let me answer that.
Sure.
I guess the shortest answer is yes, you can. You can tap into your general fund by reducing operations, so you'll have a greater savings at year-end and shift even more. Frankly, that's what we're depending on here at the end of '07, '08, '06, '07, and '07, '08, was savings that resulted from frankly, positions being vacant for the most part. That don't get filled in the course of the year. It takes a while. Every time a position becomes vacant, it takes a while to fill it. And by the time you get it filled, then at year-end, you generate some savings. We budget for an entire position. We have all 12 months of a position. That's how we budget. It's very conservative. But when a position's vacant for three months while you fill it, that results in savings. We don't generally spend that someplace else. So at the end of '06, '07, we had in the neighborhood of?
$1.5 million.
About $1.5 million. You could leave that in reserves, or you can transfer it into the CIP. In '06, '07, your general fund reserve was 31%. We expect at the end of '07, '08, we are also going to have savings over and above what we're predicting here. Even in this workup, you end up with about $1.6 million in savings, even in this workup. So that you could take the general fund reserve, even after this program, to about 32%. It takes $1.6 million to boost the general fund 1%. It's very likely at the end of '07, '08, we will again have savings if you leave it in the general fund. That'll take you, we think, very close to 35%, which is the council's goal for the savings. The answer to the question, could we cut back on the general fund, reduce programs, freeze salaries, cut positions? Yes, you can. And that'll produce considerable savings that you can leave in the reserves, or you could shift into this. You're not going to do that overnight, and you need to plan for that. You've got an operational budget coming up for '08, '09, and if that's the council's direction, recognizing the impact on programs, you can decide to do that.
But on '07, '08, which is not over yet?
Right.
It will be over in June.
Right.
How much savings do we anticipate out of that one?
We anticipate a minimum of $4 million in savings as of today.
Okay.
As we progress, that could increase.
Okay. So let's assume it's, I'll stick with your numbers, $4 million. So if we use that $4 million, would that keep our general fund reserve at a better number? Instead of 31%, it would be at a higher number?
Yes.
Yes.
In fact, again, at 1.6 per 1%, if we generate savings over and above what we're anticipating, if we generate savings of $4 million, you've got roughly 3 more percent. If you leave it in the general fund, you'd be at 34 and some change percent.
Well, we could use some of that to do some of the stuff that we need to do. For example, the old police building, there was a reason why we put that money in there. So we could convert that, so we could use it for ourselves.
You could decide to do that.
Some rentals and stuff like that.
You could go into any of those projects. Again, we've only tapped into the supplemental amount for one or two years. Recognizing in the area of parks, for example, you have additional TI resources, tax increment resources, that you can commit to parks. We think you have a very aggressive parks budget as it is, and tapping into these areas in order to help address the $4.5 million increase for parks and open space.
So as we go through that process, as we go through the new budgeting session, we could come back to this list?
Of course you can.
And modify it?
Of course you can.
Okay.
Mr. Quintero.
What does Burbank and Pasadena, what's their percentage, do you know? Is it the same as us in the 30?
Percentage of?
Their reserves? For general fund?
Yeah.
I do not know that off the top of my head.
If I can't, well, no, they weren't. I will tell you that we did a very detailed review of that, and that was, I think, the time before last, we brought up the CIP or the general fund reserves. And the problem you have is in trying to do a comparison.
Right.
For example, in Burbank, they fund and set aside a lot of money for infrastructure replacement. For example, they were doing a more aggressive job of funding their computers than we were, their rolling stock than we were. Now, we're probably getting up to a level that we equate with them. So they showed a general fund reserve, as I recall, less than us, but if you looked at all of their combined reserves, they were equal to us. I will tell you, the comments I get from Burbank people, even just recently, is our reserves are so much greater than theirs. If you look at the general fund, that's probably true. If you look at all of the various funds, it probably isn't an accurate assessment. But you can do this in so many different ways that if you look at combined funds, and for example, for us, that includes our sanitation fund. Well, that's a big number. We have the neighborhood of $40 million, Steve, 30-some million. What's our reserve in our sanitation fund?
Sewer.
Sewer fund.
Sewer fund. It's between 50 and 60 million dollars.
Yeah. But we know that's because at some point, we're going to have to fund, in all likelihood, an expansion of Hyperion, and you've been building up that money for a long time. Well, is that something you include in a comparison of reserves? Probably not. But if you look at all of our combined reserves, I think you'll find that we are right there with the most, I'll call it the most regarded communities of our size and quality. Certainly, we are right there at the top of probably the 5% of communities our size in reserves. We are in very good reserve financial condition. Our challenge continues to be, because we have a tremendous capacity to find ways to meet capital needs, I think our growing challenge is going to be, how do we program this stuff? How do we continue to provide ongoing revenues to meet the maintenance and upkeep of the various parks and facilities we're going to be developing? That'll be our biggest challenge, I think.
Just reading the newspapers, you wouldn't think so. I thought we were going broke real soon.
Well, you know, it's interesting, because everybody transfers the problem that the state is facing and the schools are now facing to us. And indeed, that may be what happens by the time the state adopts this budget. But you recall, we were in this barrel a few years ago with the state. We've had our days when frankly, the schools weren't being hit as hard, and we were being asked to help subsidize the state's budget. Well, with Proposition A, Prop A on the ballot, got us some protection. It's harder for the state to come down and take our money now. Not that I'm not trying to figure out ways to do it, but as a result, we are anticipating that we are not going to be a major component of the state's budget problem solution. We have been in the past. In fact, even today, if you go clear back to Prop 13 and the various transfers that were made in the, would have been the early 1990s. I mean, we lost $5.6 million or $4.6 million annually.
Well, it started.
The shift that happened in '92.
'93.
'93. They took $5 million of our annual property tax revenues, and we have never gotten that base back. And we got hit again when they did the two-year borrowing and took an additional.
Two, two, each year.
Yeah, two, two each year.
Just for the general.
And they hold up our gas tax money on a cash flow basis so they can fund their own cash flow needs. So we're going to be out in the neighborhood of $2.5 million, Steve. But if we do projects, we're going to have to fund it ourselves for the first six months of this next fiscal year, waiting for them to repay the money that they've kept so they can meet their own cash flow needs. But are they coming to us to try and balance the budget in the way they did in '93? No, they're not, fortunately. And they gave the schools, as I recall the number for us locally here, with something in the neighborhood of 8.5% increase in their revenues a very, very short time ago, last fiscal year. And that all went into increasing operating expenses. And where do we sit today? Well, that was done by the state with voodoo economics, because they hadn't solved their budget structure then. So what are they doing now? They're having to come back and ask to take it back again. Fortunately, we're not part of that. That doesn't mean we won't be, because the Legislative Analyst Office, in their review of the governor's initial budget, has suggested that in fact, cities be part of the contribution of the state's problem through Proposition 172.
Correct.
And the COPS program essentially being eliminated from cities. That's not an overly large number for us, but they're looking for ways for local government to contribute to this problem. But for Prop A, they'd probably have us in there for more.
And as we speak of our reserve, let's not overlook the role, the critical role that our treasurer is playing.
Oh, absolutely.
In a role of increasing inflation, it's his highly technical expertise to place our investments, stagger them for both the short run and the long run, the inverted yield curve, and all the other challenges he has to make sure our fund doesn't fritter away to nothing as inflation and construction costs and everything else that we like to use this money for comes to be. So hats off to Mr. Baruchy, who's.
He does a great job.
Tough job.
We shall move on to a review of the revenues and revisions to the revenues. For example, in our capital improvement fund, we have these resources available annually, our sales tax and then our ERAF in lieu of sales tax. ERAF stands for Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. This is part of the triple flip that went along with Prop 1A. The Shoal Canyon Assessment also is a resource here in the capital improvement fund, local grants of $2.5 million. Rubbish fees Shoal Canyon, this is what we call our tipping fees, or our 40% gross receipts from Shoal Canyon, since we are the owner. So this is roughly $5 million. are the owner. So this is roughly five million dollars annually, as, and it also increases on a periodic basis as, uh, LA County Sanitation District increases our fees. We have programmed in transfers, uh, from the general fund to the CIP. So for this year, it's nine million two one seven. And then we programmed in a million and a half. So this is our annual general fund savings from salaries, if you will, uh, going into the CIP from the general fund as the savings occur.
So, so Mr. Mayor, back to Mr. Yasefian's earlier question. Here, we're committing the general fund to find a way to save at least a million and a half dollars every year to transfer to the CIP program.
Uh, public benefit fund is contributing eight hundred thousand dollars to the old police building to, uh, put in or to replace the HVAC and, and other items that the public benefit fund can pay for.
You recall, we had originally estimated this at a million and a half dollars, as I recall.
Right.
And in sitting with GWP, we can't justify a million and a half dollars for the project under the guidelines for public benefit funds. So we've reduced it down to the number that can be justified. We've reduced the project by five hundred thousand dollars, which helps us close that gap.
Correct.
And, uh, as a result, the balance gets funded out of the CIP.
Right. Uh, let me explain a little bit on the fonts and what you see on the screen. My apologies for not doing this earlier. Everything, all the numbers that are in bold and italicized are changes from what the council adopted in June two thousand and seven. So if it's in plain text, there, that's no change from the June two thousand and seven CIP plan that, uh, council approved. If it's in bold and, uh, in italics, it is a change from that plan. And then the park and library development impact fees, which we had originally assumed back in June as well. So over the ten years, you can see that we have a hundred and sixty-eight point six million dollars in resources from these various categories that are funding the capital improvement, uh, fund. In, uh, gas tax, there was no change, except for the Prop one B state bonds. Six million four hundred and eighty-four thousand was not in the plan as of June oh seven. We did not know the timing of that. We have actually received the first installment payment of that, a little over three million dollars. So we have received roughly half of the six point four. The other half, we do not yet have a timetable on the receipt of those monies. But we have received half of this cash already last month.
So since this is the gas tax, this is gonna go toward, uh, street improvements?
Correct.
Okay.
Just street improvements. So, and here also AV twenty-nine, twenty-eight revenue. We assume zero this year, and with a repayment, uh, occurring next year. So next year is basically a double year. This is, uh, most likely gonna be on the table during the budget deliberations.
What is that?
With the state. This is the sales tax on gasoline.
AV twenty-nine, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, right. Steve knows it under a different name. Prop forty-two is what it's called.
Okay.
Um, I.
To increase it?
No, this is to dedicate the sales tax from gasoline specifically to transportation.
Right.
And this is our share.
But my understanding is there's another one pending. They're talking about increasing the gas tax itself.
That, that's the, the main gas tax, the first three that you see there.
Okay.
There's rumblings in, in, at the federal level of potentially raising the gas tax. Uh, twenty-nine, twenty-eight was the sales tax portion that previously went to the general fund, the state general fund. The, Governor Davis, uh, allocated it to transportation. And then it went through in a process, a referendum process was approved, and now we have it earmarked for, for that. Although it's been, because of the bond.
Right.
That was part of the deal with the bonds, that, that we would skip a year, get our bond money, and then get a double year next year.
Right. But this could also be, next year for two thousand and nine, that could be zero. We don't know that yet.
We may not see the double back in the repayment for a long time.
Right. That is correct.
Any increase in the federal gas tax is gonna go to the federal government, to the Highway Trust Fund or whatever. It's not necessarily gonna come back to us.
Well, there is a portion that comes back, that could come back to us. You're right. There's no guarantee. No guarantee. There, there is, there is a potential that.
That's not reflected in any event.
No, that's not.
That's just talk right now. Exactly.
No numbers here. Um, the last item is interest revenue. Gas tax has to be, uh, money has to be used strictly for streets, as well as any interest earnings on it. So that's why you see interest revenue here in this fund of roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year. And that's just an estimate based on average cash balances over, over the last number of years. So over the ten-year total, we have fifty-seven million and three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for the gas tax fund and resources.
But it is my understanding, Mr. Mayor, last time we talked about the CIP business, you needed ten million dollars just to be in that, what was it, seventy or eighty percentile?
Correct. It was, it was around eleven and a half million.
So while it may look like it's a lot of money, in reality, it's half what you need.
Correct.
Okay.
That's that road index to keep up at that certain level.
Payment quality index.
Further.
In an ideal world.
Alligatoring and all that others.
Eleven and a half million dollars.
Right.
And as we continue each year, I'll bring that back and show you how that's, that's played out.
Some large categories of expenses not going down into the project level yet, but just having these seven categories, you can see, are annual contribution now, um, with these additional fundings for streets and parks and so forth, what we are allocating to these major programs. So for example, streets is for two thousand and eight is eleven million nine eighty-four, and then it goes down to seven, six. This is the, uh, Prop one B bonds that we just went over, the six and a half million. So that's why you got the decrease. And you can see it ramping up, nine million, thirteen million, then thirteen million for the first five years of fifty-five and a half million. Parks, you can see the allocation starting at two-nine, and then increasing to four-three, five-seven, four-four, then nine-five, and that's different, uh, projects coming online for five years of twenty-six point nine million. Open space of five million over the first five years. Libraries, twenty-one point two million allocated to libraries. ADA, two point seven-five million. This is just over the first five years. City infrastructure, which is a whole host of, of different items, uh, be it.
But primarily streets?
No. Streets is the first item. City infrastructure would be the fire stations.
Okay.
And other things that aren't parks and libraries.
And the radios.
And the radios, and GTV six, and so forth. Of fifteen and a half million. And then technology of eleven point one million. The technology is actually where the wireless is, Mr. Starboard, as well as CSI and some, and some other technology items. So this is just the first five years of a hundred and thirty-eight point one million dollars. And then the second five years, you can see streets has a total allocation over these ten years of a hundred and three point eight million. So almost double the gas tax allocation. We have, we have, uh, done for streets. Parks, fifty-two point eight million dollars over ten years. Open space, five and a half. Libraries, twenty-seven million. ADA, six point one million. City infrastructure, twenty-nine point eight million. And then technology, twenty-three million for a total allocation over ten years of almost a quarter of a billion dollars, two hundred and forty-eight million dollars over ten years, to the city's infrastructure in one area or another. Streets or parks, or, or computer technology, or wireless, or what have you. So here's kind of a bigger picture by rough categories of these, of the ten-year plan.
But in reality, anything over five years gets hazy.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you may see a hundred and three million dollars for streets, but by the time you get to two thousand seventeen, God knows what the cost of asphalt is.
Is gonna be. Right, exactly.
That's right.
Right. And we have no idea what future gas tax revenues are gonna be, if they increase or decrease, or they go to a different system. We have no idea.
The whole, the whole method of financing can change.
Yeah, gasoline will be ten dollars a gallon.
But, but Steve, on that note, have we ever had a ten-year allocation this large?
No, sir.
And it doesn't get you where you'd like to be, which was about ten million dollars a year.
Correct, but that's.
But we've never had this aggressive a schedule over ten years.
I've never had anything in the double-digit millions.
I think you'd probably find the same thing on parks and libraries as well.
Okay. So now we can drill down into the actual project level. Again, if it, if the numbers are bold and italicized, it is a change from the June two thousand and seven approved ten-year CIP that the council adopted. So this is through the deliberations between July and December.
Let me suggest on the small items, if there are no questions about these, we.
Just blow right through?
Go on to some of the big items.
Okay, sure. So Fire Station twenty-nine, five and a half million. We talked about that. ADA facility, the original, the top line, the four hundred thousand is what you originally allocated. The bottom line is what we are additionally putting towards the ADA.
Right, to catch up.
To catch up, right.
Uh, again, as we noted before, this does not include ADA improvements that we, that would be incorporated into every capital project we do. So we build a park, we put in sidewalks, we put in the handicap ramps. That is all over and above this. So this is standalone projects that are not part of a broader capital project.
So street reconstruction, you can see here is zero for oh eight, zero for oh nine, and then a million and a half a year to street reconstruction.
That's on.
And on top of the original.
We didn't borrow it, we took it.
Right, we took the.
I don't want anybody to think we're gonna pay it back. We just took it.
Yeah.
But you already, remember, in oh eight, oh nine, and, or in oh eight.
Guys are worse than the state.
Well.
Or you're learning from the state.
We're just taking out of one pocket and putting in the other. Just remember, in oh eight and nine, you have the gas tax on top of the existing million and a half dollars. So you still have a fairly considerable, uh, street sidewalk curb and gutter program.
And let's not forget the Prop one B bonds of almost six and a half million dollars, which we received almost half in cash already, in this current fiscal year. Uh, so this is the ten-year for these, uh, projects. ADA, original plan was four million one hundred fifty thousand. We have added an additional two million, so for a total of six million one hundred and fifty thousand over the ten years. The, uh, street reconstruction, we add an additional nineteen and a half million on top of, if you will, fifteen million, five for resurfacing, five for gutter, and five for street reconstruction. So an additional nineteen and a half million on top of that program. Uh, Public Works, there is no changes here, except for, excuse me, the bottom half. Central Avenue Rehab of twelve million dollars. City Entry Markers is a new program of fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, Slope Repairs of two and a half million. And then here's the, uh, ten-year, oh, one more. Shaw Canyon Landfill Reserve, if you'll remember, we made these two also zero for oh eight and for oh nine to help us balance those requirements.
But this is where we borrow. We catch up in two thousand and ten.
Right.
Because we wanna stay on track in that reserve.
Right.
Right.
So here's the, uh, ten-year program for, for these. So Shaw Canyon Landfill Reserve, we're still setting aside fourteen million over the ten years. Um, on down, Ball Field Light, Adult Rec, Park Upgrade, Central Park Renovation. The only addition here is an additional program of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, starting in ten. So this is where we took money again from oh eight and oh nine on the additional park upgrade to help us fund those new requirements that came up.
It says park upgrade slash maintenance. I hope we're just not letting maintenance go. It's just the upgrade, right? We don't make it better, but we maintain them still.
Yeah, there are some facilities where we'll go in and renovate, such as restroom facilities and playgrounds. This is where we'll use the money for.
Okay.
So you may be replacing something that's already there.
Right.
It may not be an upgrade.
Yeah, it may not be a complete up, may not be more than what you've had, but it's, it's keeping what you've had up to date.
I just wanna make sure we have some money to maintain stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's separate than this.
Uh, so the ten-year total, park upgrades, we had set aside eight million in the original program. Now we're adding two million more for a total of ten million for just park upgrades and maintenance. There's more park programs, uh, coming up.
And, and the soccer fields, where would they fall on?
They're coming up.
They're coming up, oh.
Soccer fields are specifically identified, yeah.
Right. Maryland Mini Park Development, we actually took that out, uh, so that.
Let's comment on this. What we anticipate is the cost of developing the park will be through our private-public partnership.
Okay.
So we're anticipating we'll be able to develop the park utilizing, uh, that, that private investment exchange for the, on the ground parking.
Cedar, Stengo, and Montrose, no change from the original adopted. And then the last three on this slide, Pacific Park Neighborhood Pool of a million four. Uh, new program, tax-defulted property purchases of roughly a hundred thousand dollars we're setting aside, so that we don't have to come and allocate, uh, specifically with the council. And then Freeway Park Site A, which we've already had some discussion on.
Now, here is where, if you wanna move this forward, the five hundred thousand for pre-planning, we dragged that forward into an earlier year.
Yeah, I'd like to move, uh, the five hundred thousand planning. Let's start the planning process and work through that as soon as we can.
Okay. What we might do, and we've created some capacity, we might drag half of it into oh eight and half of it into oh nine. Because we'll, you'll probably have engineering in the very first part, then at some parts, at some point, you'll hire a, uh, environmental firm to come in and do your SEQA. So you kinda have to do all of your design work, your engineering work, go out and do your soils test, see what's out there. Probably some pre-community work, but get a concept developed along with the base engineering before you can do your environmental. Yeah, some good concept plans.
And then the second part of the, uh, ten years, and you can, and you can see the totals there. So the tax-defulted property purchases, an annual program that gets ramped up to a hundred thousand dollars, or is set at a hundred thousand dollars a year. And everything else is zero in the second part of the ten years. Here's your Columbus Soccer Field in, uh, oh nine and in ten for three and a half million dollars. Uh, ARC Tennis Court Replacement, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. New Park Development is a new program. We, uh, took two and a half million dollar, or.
That's right.
Yeah, we took two and a half million dollars out to help fund the new requirements. And then this is an annual program. And then open space of four and a half million, and then the Aquatic Center, um, starting the program, or starting to set aside money in eleven and in twelve.
Mr. Quintero.
The tennis court replacements, that sort of, uh, planning or design money. Uh, it's my understanding that the school districts backed off from, uh, from the Glendale High School.
Yeah, we, we, we agree. We reported on this at our last budget meeting, which would have been last October. Uh, we had agreed with the district that we'd pass on the high school courts, and instead focus on Columbus. Don't let that project bog us down. And it looked like it was gonna take, frankly, we referred to it as a lot of brain damage to get that project done. Parks gave a presentation that we should look at the replacement at Fremont Park, and there was an interest in looking at how we might develop more of a tennis center at Fremark, at Fremont. Now, we already have seven hundred thousand dollars budgeted, so this money is on top of that. So we get up to the nine hundred thousand dollar range, uh, to do something at Fremont Park.
And we had a presentation.
Right, you had a presentation on, on how that might work.
And we should be coming back to council about a month on that presentation. The, um, the new park development, how would we describe that? Again, what's the concept of that?
Well, for example, a mini park.
Or expansion of a mini park, or anything like that.
If you came back around and wanted, you know, you talked about wanting to do a dog park that's about a five hundred thousand dollar cost. This is where a new dog park would come from. A mini park, if a property came online that we could acquire, maybe a parcel becomes for sale, this is where we'd go to get funding for that.
So for this year, we have no money for that, right? Okay.
Uh, for oh eight.
So we'll spend the time to finish up the projects that we started.
Well, and remember.
Well, you do, you do have money already budgeted that's there, that George is, George has in his program, but right, no additional money.
No additional. Well, and keep in mind, the biggest new park development is that other four and a half million dollars that you saw there under.
Right.
Under Parks Open Space. So in oh eight, in oh eight and oh nine, uh, you commit somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, eight to nine million dollars for new park development over and above these figures here.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, that was my question, in terms of Griffith Manor Park, is that part of this or in another?
No, Griffith Manor Park's not reflected in here. It's in the GRA budget.
Because that's a redevelopment.
Right.
Yes.
Three million dollars in there for Griffith Manor. So if we were to come up with a plan to develop a park in conjunction with purchasing open space to be surrounded, uh, to surround an aquatic center, potentially those funds could all be accumulated?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the category of new park development, um, isn't identified as anything in particular. It's just earmarking money for that purpose.
Okay. And then completing out the ten years, you can see the numbers. Columbus Soccer Field, three and a half million, the tennis courts at two, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. New Park Development, over the ten years, of nine million dollars. Open Space, of four and a half million. And then the Aquatic Center, this, these numbers are directly tied with the seventy-five percent TI from new housing in the central downtown project area.
Now, what isn't in, what isn't in here, what isn't in here is the. What isn't in here is the 25%.
Correct.
Commercial. So we do not have numbers in here in the 25% commercial. So the numbers committed to Parks, libraries from TI will go up by some number. I don't recall what it is.
I either.
The 20 million could be $3 or $4 million more depending on what happens in the commercial area because you've committed 25%.
Okay. And again, these are all additional from the June '07 adopted budget. Library Projects, Brand at $900,000, renovate existing libraries, these were already in the June budget, $450,000 a year. Montrose Branch Library of $11 million. Rock Haven Property of $4.2 million. Rock Haven Rehab of $2 million, and we kind of split it up into '10 and '12. Those can move around as need be.
And my guess is we'll need to come back and look at these. If we're successful on the Rock Haven property discussions, we'll probably want to do some initial work even in '08, '09, along with maybe beginning some community discussions at some point so we can start to develop a concept. But we may need to move some portion of this $2 million up into earlier years.
Right. And then here's the 10 years, so the only thing that continues is the annual program on renovate existing libraries of the $450,000. New programs, Full Branch Library, that's money in the second half of the 10-year. Central Library Equipment Replacement, sorry that it got cut off, this is the equipment replacement at Central Library of $850,000. Central Library Entrances, this is reorientating the two entrances or making two entrances in Central Library, roughly a quarter million each for a total of $500,000. And then Brand Library Renovation, an annual program that's starting up of half a million dollars, so you see in the numbers for the full 10-year. Brand Library Renovation, $2,750,000. Onto our general government projects, these five are no change from the original adopted budget back in June. These three are additional. Old Police Building, $2 million, document management system of $100,000, and remodel MSB first floor of $500,000. And then we are done with our CIP fund, and you can see the totals at the bottom of each year for a total in our CIP of $167,781,000, listing all these projects. Gas tax, no change except for San Fernando Road, and this is specifically using the Prop 1B funds. Council already appropriated the money either in December or January, I can't remember exactly which month. So this money is already appropriated by a specific resolution by the council already. And you can see the total for the 10 years is $57,339,000 in gas tax money. Again, San Fernando Road being the only change. And that's it. I don't need to go over specific revenues unless you want me to, but that's.
So our CIP budget is balanced?
CIP budget is balanced.
As presented. Say yes.
Yes, sir. Over 10 years, it is balanced.
So they need a motion. Before we get on, I do have some speakers, but I would just like to thank my colleagues for going down this path. When did we start, Mr. Starbird?
Started this in July.
July. I don't think any one of us thought it would be, it would take us along the many twists and turns that we did, and it really was a lot of devotion of time, not just to my colleagues but to all the department heads and staff that sat through every Tuesday morning for several hours. And I think, I don't know if it's ever been done in this depth and detail before, but I think it was needed, certainly needed, because we had just a lot of questions coming from council about these CIP issues. And hopefully the process was very transparent and very open and understandable to anyone who was following along. We had several members of the public who attended almost all these meetings. So thank you for, thank you to everyone for going down this road, jumping in my little red wagon and coming as far as we did. I think we all learned something and hopefully we can.
We're going to use that.
And Mr. Mayor, again, at the risk of being a little redundant, I think you all should give yourself credit for what is a very aggressive program and commitment in areas of parks, including soccer fields and new parks and open space, while at the same time, as Steve noted, he can't recall when we have ever had this level of commitment to maintaining our streets and sidewalks and curbs and gutters in this town, addressing library issues, and also beginning to address the things that we have in the past sometimes had a hard time facing up to in the area of technology and our radio system. It's been very hard in the past years to see our way clear of committing funds to. This does all of that. It shows the capacity the city has and a fairly considerable commitment by the general fund to put resources into infrastructure by tune of the almost $10 million in this fiscal year and at least $1.5 million a year over the next 10 years.
Thank you. I have about four cards. I know we're expecting a guest around 5 o'clock. Let me hear the speakers and then my colleagues can make any final comments on this item, and then we'll have a motion. Vilma Vera.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, all members of the staff. My name is Vilma Vera, and I'm here on my behalf and on behalf of the neighbors. Well, they couldn't come today because they're either working or picking up their children from the school, so this was a very inconvenient time. I have to get off from work to come to attend this meeting. So anyway, the reason why I'm here is to ask the city to support with the funds for the Griffith Manor Park Master Plan. Because by having this new park, this new park is going to enhance our neighborhood because we're so sick and tired of drug addicts because that's the, right now, the way the park is, is the home of gang members, there is gang activity, drug activity, and is the home of homeless people. And so we are so sick and tired of that. So we want, you know, from the city to make some changes around our neighborhood. Because sometimes we think that we are part of Glendale, even though they were kind of borderline, but no, we belong to Glendale City. So we are asking the city, please do some improvements around our area so in that way we'll have less gang activities. So that's why I'm here, to beg the city to come around our neighborhood and take a look and see what kind of improvements you can, you know, make. And this specific park is going to, like I said, is going to enhance our neighborhood.
We'll be coming back to you with the whole program of increased security improvements in all of our park system, and we'll make sure that this is included when we evaluate all that. And we have these kinds of challenges faced in all of our parks. You've heard of many of them, everything from Brand to this to Car Park. And as a result, Parks Recreation has put more effort into looking at how we can boost security systems in our various parks, especially with the use of technology. So we'll make sure this one's on the list.
Mr. Starbird, if I'm not mistaken, we also purchased some properties for the Western Exit.
As part of the GRA project, yeah.
Right, and I think we are giving part of that property to the Griffith Manor Park.
Yeah, we'll bring you back a whole status report on Griffith Manor.
It's going to be enlarged a little bit.
And make sure we have your telephone number and contact points so Park should recognize and stay in touch with you and the neighborhood.
Oh, okay. And I also got the signature, this is a quote of the list of the neighbors.
Good, thank you.
And we're really.
Give that to the city clerk.
We'll lodge it in the record. Thank you. Herbert Milano.
Good afternoon, my name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. First, I'd like to make a correction. I submitted a document that has some numbers that I found out just now that were inaccurate. One of the first times that I picked up somebody else's numbers and used it to base my analysis. On most occasions, and if not all, I usually pick up my own documents, do my own sourcing, usually from the city's direct documents. So I want to be speaking in general with regard to the capital improvement budget and program in the following way. One of the things that cities want to accomplish in their mission statement is the concept of fairness. You know, do we distribute our budget in a way that is fair to everyone and fair geographically as well? And are we conveying an information that is truly transparent and how is it transparent? I want to pick something that is not too political, but it nonetheless highlights some of the issues that I have. If I take, for example, the capital improvement with regard to public works and roadways, improvements in reconstruction, I come out with roughly $5.8 million a year, let's say $6 million. But from what I recall from the studies that were done and the evaluation of the roads in Glendale, you need to do at least $10 million, you know, $900,000 to $1 million a mile. So we are shortchanging the city by a tune of four miles a year that begins to, in a way, accumulate because those roads will continue to deteriorate. And that information doesn't show up. The other question would then be is what parts of Glendale are more deficient in a way that you could see at a glance, right, where they need is and where the capital improvement needs to be? Because see, when I drive in Glendale, I pay attention to these things. I went to see some friends near Garfield, went down Columbus, and was actually observing the roadways, and they're in terrible condition. So my question is, when these areas get the attention? On California, 211 East California, drive by there, take a look at the curves, they're crumbling. So when I personally see those things, I ask myself, where do I get a report that says the city's paying attention to this and where do we find this infrastructure needs improved? And today, of course, you saw individuals who came and telling you that we have significant shortages with regard to adequate recreational park space in this area. And so what we don't find in here is, we find the financial numbers, but we do not find are the needs and the shortages with regard to all of these resources, right, in a way that we can see it area by area. Because at the end of the day, one of the missions of the city is to behave for government in a way that is fair and equitable to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Armand Gorgorian? I think he left. Richard Lyons? Mr. Lyons left. So, okay. That is the extent of my comments on the CIP. The public? Mr. Weaver.
I'm with 2A. Thank you for all the hard work, staff.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
With the modification.
With the modification.
Modification of the $500,000.
Moved to the 208, distributed in the, is that direction or?
It can be included as part of the motion. It's directed by the city council, that's to move the allocation for the studies on Freeway Site A, I believe it is, to $250,000 in '08 and '09. Yes, yeah, let me suggest that you approve it with an adjustment to the appropriate years because we need to give some thought to what kind of work is going to need to be done, but recognizing we're going to need to be shifting some resources of the planning money from the later years where noted and then spread among '08, '09 in some fashion.
That's fine.
Okay, with that modification. Mr. Seffian.
Since there's a motion and a second, I just want to give my two cents on this. I'm going to vote for this, but I just hope my colleagues realize that I'm still not sold on this whole thing. I'm still going to sit and wait to see what happens with the actual budget that we deal with, if there are other ways to reduce some of our costs to help out with one of these. The other thing that I also am not very crazy about this capital improvement program for the next 10 years is that basically in 10 years, we're going to do only three soccer fields. 10 years, three soccer fields. We're short 40. So I like to, for myself, I like to keep my option open as we start looking down the line in future years. I think we need to loosen up some funding so we could do more than three in 10 years. And there are other ways to fund some of these things. And I think we need to start looking into our general fund, we need to find savings there, and not just depend on reserves because my recollections are correct, in the past, before Mr. Starbird showed up, previous council started looking at the reserves, and next thing you know, reserves weren't what the reserves used to be. So you can't depend on reserves all the time because they're one-time money, they're fixed, and they just sit there. That's it. You spend them, they're gone. While when you're dealing with your regular annual budget, it's recurring every year. So when you save something and you reduce your cost one year, that continues over several years and the cost savings add up. So I don't want to be depending just on reserves to do some of these things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I agree. Parks in general and sports fields in particular, I think, should be among our highest priorities. We have an awful lot of young people in just general population that need places for recreation and places for sports, so it should be on the top of our priorities.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. You got the second? Roll call, please.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Seffian?
Hi.
Aaron Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're adjourned for the council.
Thank you all.
We are adjourned.